Right, my apologies. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We appreciate everybody being here tonight. Like to thank the council. We'd like to thank the council for being here. We've got a full quorum, so. We've asked Councilman Louie Mark to give the opening prayer, and then following that, we'll go ahead and say to the pledge of allegiance.
Dear the Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather as citizens of Roosevelt City and as a city council. We're grateful for the opportunity, for the stewardship we have for the funds of Roosevelt City, as well as for the patrons and help and prayers we make decisions in the city that will do best for our patrons, to help them be safe, to have those things that they stand in need of that the city can provide. We're grateful for the people in the city that work in the city, that help keep the city going. We're especially grateful for those that serve the fire, law enforcement, and EMTs and others that help keep us safe. Rest of you continue to watch over and protect them. We're grateful for those in the military and their service. We're grateful for all blessings we have, and especially for living in this town of Roosevelt, and for the people here, and we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item of business is the amendments in the last meeting. Any amendments or corrections?
I'd just like to thank Sierra for following the update that was recommended. I think it's a lot easier to just have a couple of notes that would help us remember what was discussed. I didn't see any problems, so I went to approve on something else. Saw something.
Okay, yeah, we motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Boyd, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion is unanimous. We do have our public comment here. Anyone in the public can come and speak to the council for up to three minutes. Are there any here tonight that would like to take that opportunity?
I would. I was hoping that you'd not hear a little hurry here. I spoke with the rest of them. My name's Todd Party. Y'all know who I am. Y'all know why I'm here. What I've done is I went online. If you look in front of you, you will see that pickleball. Ready? Went on that, went on that website. And I found the best pickleball screen that I could find. And I got a call the company and I got a bid for it right there, the dollar. Now, I'm here tonight, citizen to citizen, to ask you, if you'll donate half of that, and I'll donate the other half, to clean that park up. You can write it up on your business. Are you willing to do that tonight?
What's the, uh?
The cost of a tray there, the dollar.
Five eighty.
Oh, five eighty.
Roughly three hundred bucks a day.
I'll tell you what, Todd, if you'll do half, I'll do half.
Bet you like my money tonight, or you want me to break down more.
Just let me know, and we'll, I'll do it together.
All right.
Okay. All right, and then I'll just, I'll cover the other half. Is that, but we need to make sure the council, it's not something, I don't know that we, that's a, Dustin, how do you feel about putting something like that up there?
I just, Todd just handed me this, but I think it looks good. I don't see why.
This is a professional pickleball.
Yeah.
With screen.
So what we'll do is, is we'll give a staff, make sure that it's, it's all kosher, and we'll.
Well, this is, this is real the way I'm sure you all go for it, because I got you all the information.
Sure.
How I got it, where I got it from, all of that for.
Awesome.
Brought it in, in France. And I'm gonna give you three hundred dollars tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here that would like to comment? Anybody else wanna?
Be hard to cop that one.
Well, I've been thirty years trying to clean this park up. It's been my neighbor for thirty years.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Dean Sellers. I work with Moon Lake Electric Association. First of all, I want to just express Moon Lake's appreciation for all of the council and city serving, for all the service that you do for the community. I'm not here on any official business tonight. As part of Moon Lake, we really try to get out and be a part of the community, which includes attending some of these town meetings, town council meetings that are within our service territory. I'm here just to thank all you for the service that you perform. And if there's any feedback that I can take from the council of Moon Lake, I'm happy to do so. If there's any feedback, or any requests, or recommendations, I'm just happy to do that.
Only feedback I would have is just appreciate all you guys are doing. Anything we can do to help keep our electric prices low. Like you guys have been doing a great job.
Thank you.
And appreciate the service that you provide for our community. Does anyone have anything?
No, I just agree with the mayor. I think that's, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Allen said his needs raise or something like that.
Well, we're keeping rates low, so.
Are there anyone else here tonight that would like to take a few minutes? Seeing none, we'll move forward with the next item. We have planning and zoning appointments. Drew? He's not, he's not here tonight. Are you gonna present those, Sierra?
Yeah.
So these are just basically people that have been asked that currently serve in the planning and zoning. So we thought they were willing to serve another term. There will be one other seat that we need to present to the board, but thought we'd get these out of the way for tonight's.
Okay, so we just have Ren Bagley for his third term for reappointment, and then Keith Goodspeed for his second, and then Lynn Snow for his fourth and final.
Okay. I can't believe Lynn's been on that one. Yeah. Holy smokes. Okay. It's a three-year appointment, four terms total, right? Twelve years.
Yep.
Mayor, I would have moved to approve, especially because they're good men and good experience there to help us, and then hopefully we can get a, another person on that.
Okay, and do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Dustin White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and let them know, and then Sierra and I will work on that fourth appointment.
Yes.
We should, we should have that either by the first meeting in March or the second, so. And then we'll also have a lot of the other committees that need appointments or renewals of appointment in those two meetings as well. So, thank you. Roosevelt City Fire Stats. Chief, are you hiding out in the back?
Couldn't hide very good. So, well, we just, everyone we have, I have to present, so I don't know if there's a whole lot to go over there. Councilman Louie Mark, I already mentioned looking at how busy of a year we had last year. Last time we came in and said, wow, we had a busy year, it was a hundred and sixty-three calls. This year we had a hundred and ninety-three. So we grew up another thirty calls from our previous busy year. Actually, as you go through those, if you have any questions, you can ask them. But the part that I like to point out each time is our response time in Roosevelt City is still at ten minutes for us. And for those that may be new and hadn't heard, our response time is from when our pager goes off to work on the scene. So no matter where we're at, middle of the night, or work wherever, we get stationed in a truck or roll, our response time in the city is under ten minutes.
That is amazing.
Out in the county, it's a little more, but we did go into quite a few oil level patients over by Martin this year. That added to a lot of our response time traveling that far. This year, we did have some people that spent a lot of time at a big fire that was up in Yola. We were up there for three different days. And then in the fall, we had crews that went up three different heights up to the yellow light fire. And spent their nights there, helping protect structures up there by Tassie Yola, so. Appreciate the new trucks that we were able to get. We utilized those quite a bit with those calls. If we go through our difference there, you can see we had a twenty-one percent increase on our total calls. And then I've got it broke down there as far as different descriptions of what kind of fires they were, and you can see the difference between the two years. The big one there, if you go down to jurisdictional difference, is Unit County was up nine hundred and thirty-three percent in twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-twenty-three, we went to three different calls in Unit County, where we went to thirty-one of them this past year, so that was a big jump in the number of calls over there. And then on the next page is our man hours. That same thing. In Unit County, up sixteen hundred and fifty-seven percent on man hours. And just depending what the calls were and the time that we went there, we had such an increase in the policy in the county that that made a difference almost.
Do we have our agreements between us and Unit County?
Correct. Yes.
And good.
I know mine's where, and I believe Josh's too, but some of them that we probably should be looking at is our agreements with Tribe and VIA. They're from two thousand and two, if I remember right, but, but the counties are correct. The next one is the percent of runs per jurisdiction. And as you go through that, you can see we dropped eight-two percent in the city, nine percent in Duchesne County, but then again, seven hundred and fifty-seven percent increasing in Unit County. And then all the others were down. So our difference there was Unit County is what made the big difference on the number of calls. And then responses, so we have our two thousand, or sorry, Unit Two-O-Seven, which is a two thousand and two aerial. And being a second out pumper, the way we keep it fresh and running is we drive it on all of our on calls. So ran our frontline pumper sixty-nine calls, and then that truck on sixty-three calls. So all of our arms has truck to do, just so that it gets ran and being used. Our two brush trucks, which are Fire Two-O-Five and Fire Two-O-Six. The big difference there is Fire Two-O-Five was a new truck that we got last year. And so it was frontline and got used a lot more. And then Two-O-Six is the one we picked up. So two years ago, it was Two-O-Five, Two-O-Six, the one we picked up this past year. And so just depending where they're at in the lineup there, that's how they'll roll. But that's why there's such a big discrepancy there. Everyone's taking a new truck versus their twenty-year-old truck, so. Our busiest day last year, where is the next one? Yeah, so Wednesday and Friday were our busy days. They were equal number of calls on those two days. But as you notice there, almost all of them are pretty close on the number of calls we had each day. Our busiest time was at noon. I wouldn't say I can tell you why. It used to be busier in the morning when the farmers up at the fields, and then we, we finish up and we get the call. But our busiest time there was noon. And then the last two are our individual firefighter stats for you to review. Just for your information, the bylaws require that firefighters attend seventy-five percent of the trainings and forty percent of the calls. So if you see some of those on there that have lower numbers than that, we have a committee that has met and has talked to them, written them letters, let them know that they need to bring the numbers up, or that there's a chance to be a fire.
It used to be sixty and forty. Long time ago.
That's been a long time ago. It's been seventy-five and forty.
I was just gonna say like twenty years.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we have three guys that are currently going through getting their certification. They have passed the fire line test. They start having that operations class next month. And once they finish that, then they'll be fire one certified.
Do you have, are you both staffed?
We are, we're down to, again, we're, we're just not meant to be fully staffed apparently, because every time we get there, we could.
It's twenty-one?
Twenty-one. Yeah, we have nineteen currently, so.
After, any questions for Chief?
So a while ago, we had a discussion of increasing calling for a false alarm. Has that helped to cut back on your false alarms? Are you still getting a lot of those?
So I'm glad you remembered that, because Councilman Louie Mark asked me about that before. The one that's been our habitual problem did kind of check to the city for a pretty sizable amount because of the calls. I don't know that it's cut back on, but I know they didn't pay, we didn't, they didn't get any voice till the end of the year. So they may not have been aware now that they, this was coming, they might take care of it. He did say he was gonna call the company, get a sensor replaced, and one that had been taken out of the room put back in. And we haven't called their sense, but.
Any other questions?
No, I just appreciate all your efforts. I hope we can get those false alarms down, because it is what it is, I guess, but it should be nice to get those down.
Well, thanks for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your support in what we do too. Thanks.
All right, next item, we have the State Street Pest Starting Project. Silco and Stere.
Mayor, I'm just here to give an update from the last time we met. We talked about where we stood on the project. And it was asked that we go back and look and see if there's anything we could do to reduce costs, because we were looking at about a two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-dollar overrun at that time. And so what we did is we went back and looked at taking the paving off of the trail. The trail project. And so to take the paving out of the, the project, we also went back and worked with UDOT to review our estimate numbers. And some of those came down considerably from what we were looking at. And so as of today, what we're looking at, and wanted to come back and report to the council, is right now, we are looking at reducing that overrun from two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars down to essentially fifty-nine-thousand dollars on that project.
Okay.
Much better.
Yeah.
Much better. But like I say, right now, that, those are estimates. I believe there's a couple items here that may also help us some more with this. We're in the process of acquiring right-of-way up there, and we are going to acquire that in permanent easements versus fee title property. So we believe we may have some extra money in that category that would help reduce this also a little bit more and bring this down. Plus, working with Larry Montoya, our project manager with UDOT, he's also looking to see if he can find us some more money along that line. But like I say, as well, we wanted to come report to the council tonight is that we're looking at about two-hundred-thousand dollars less than we were a month ago.
Great.
So that's a good thing.
Ryan, do you, as far as the paving on the trails, so, do we have the funding to?
We do. We have the funding in the Cottonwood Creek Trail project. My question is to Troy, just to make sure, this is just the trail pavement, correct? Not the road or?
Yes, this is just the trail pavement. This, our estimate includes all the road paving, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalks, the pedestrian signage, everything on that. This just included taking the trail portion of the paving. We'll build the trail up. We'll build it up through gravel with this, and just leave the paving to be done with the other project.
So Duchesne County is working on that road as well. And I just had another conversation with Commissioner Miles. And they're definitely wanting to do something together, because this will impact both projects. I mean, you know, where they're going to be paving and where we're going to be paving looks like it's gonna overlap some. Is there something we can do to, can, do you know who the engineers are over the county project?
I don't, I don't know.
County.
On State Street. So if we could get ahold of county and just see how far they're going to pave that road. I know they were thinking maybe holding off right there where Moon Lake's building is. I think they originally wanted to come a little further. But if we could work with them, you know, we've got a lot of bill that we've gotta put in there to raise that up. There's a lot of things that maybe we can do in conjunction with the county right there, and also save some costs.
The, the last time you and I spoke, Mayor, I, I contacted Mike Casper with the county and asked him. And Mike indicated to me that they were stopping north of the access road into the nature park.
Okay.
And so they wouldn't, they wouldn't overlap, but I'll get back ahold of Mike and confirm that.
If you agree with Mike, because I think originally they had planned to go further south. But when they heard that we were doing something there, then they kind of stopped. But if they do have money to come further south, then we can just.
We'd love to use their money.
Yeah, or in, make a project between the two entities that serves both and would be cost-effective to both.
I, I will do that. I'll get ahold of Mike and talk to him. And verify that, and then I'll report back to you.
Okay, sounds good. With that, I don't know that we need an approval other than just, well, an approval to move forward, I guess, of this design.
Yeah, Troy and I were speaking earlier, too. We've had this funding for two years.
Yeah.
First position of it. So it'd be kind of important to get moving forward on it, but obviously that's up to council, so.
So I feel with the numbers, I, I think it's definitely something we need to do, and, and I feel like we're in the ballpark, and we should probably move forward.
Yeah, I would, I would motion that we do that, but Troy gets with Mike at the county and just see if there's any way we can coordinate. If there's a way to save a little more, that'd be great. But I would move, that we go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, they did mention, if I'm not mistaken, at least road base and a few things that they can help us with. Todd said that, so we do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Okay, Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
Okay. Now, we'll move forward. We'll get this thing advertised so we can get it done. Thank you.
Can we get the rhino and elephant crossing signs with Todd?
We got them in here.
I want them. I want to see those. I'm serious. I think those will be funny for people to drive by and see those, and it might slow them down a little bit in that area.
Well, that is the point.
All right, so we have a city from that discussion and direction. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council. As you see, we have our friends from K and K here, and Councilman Goodrich did attend Interfaith. So what we want to do is coordinate the dates for the city life cleanup. Make sure we do it in coordination, if possible, with the county. Make sure it works with K and K. In some of our discussions, I have volunteered some of the staff to do the service project to help out with some of that. We want to make this a big city life thing where we're all working together. We can come together and just help clean up things. So I believe Councilman Goodrich has some dates from Interfaith that I presume.
I think Ryan got some dates from K and K, but you weren't sure on what the county's doing.
I checked in today, and they're tentative, we.
April twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth through May third.
Okay, so with Interfaith, the dates that we had were the week before that, and then through the twenty-sixth. So now we're gonna start the twenty-sixth and go through the next. Okay.
We usually do it after Easter, and Easter weekend is the nineteen and twenty.
Yeah, and Easter is really late, and the first dates were Easter. So Interfaith has picked the twenty-sixth to focus on doing a project, and usually they will clean around Constitution Park walking path, just the trees and things that are there. So that's kind of their plan. When Josh and I talked, we thought maybe the city employees could pick a day and do some things around the city. And we also talked about having a few dumpsters placed around the city. Josh said in the past, that's been a problem, because people don't always get things in the dumpsters. But we talked that maybe city employees could circle around before they were picked up or dumped and make sure things were all inside. So, am I?
So, so in, in regards to that, we are happy to do, that's part of the reason we're here. We want to facilitate and assist in any way we can. Rewinding in history, a hundred years, that was the way the city used to do it, was we would place dumpsters around the city and stuff. And there, there was two problems that arose. The first one was there was no, by having the dumpsters out like that, there, there was no shut-off. Meaning on Saturday night, when everybody goes home and the landfill's closed, the dumpster's still sitting there, so people just keep coming and use it, and, and we don't work Sunday. And so it'd be, I mean, there will have been times that we had to come out on Sunday to clean it up just so it wasn't an additional problem. And then the other problem is the fact that they back up there with a couch, or a washer, or a refrigerator, get it in the dumpster, and landfill don't want refrigerators in the dumpster. And so that was when, during that time, we was building the transfer station and come and visit with the city, and, and the idea of people taking it to the transfer station came into play was for those two reasons, was getting, not getting things that didn't belong in the dumpsters, for one, and then the fact of the mess that was created around them. With that being said, a few years ago, when Councilman White was part of it, we did place a couple of dumpsters out and about. They had city crews monitor them and stuff. But for the most part, when that happened, the majority of the people was already in the habit of going to the transfer station, so there wasn't a lot of activity during, at those locations where the dumpsters was placed. And what we did on those ones was at four o'clock, we picked them up.
Yeah.
And that, so that, that did permit for a shut-off on it, to where it couldn't be abused over the weekend.
Right.
And one thing, just so council's aware, when I said I spoke with staff, we, we volunteered to help in any way possible. So if that's, we will help whether it's that option, any option, so. Because we want this to be a discussion that works best for everybody, so.
But we're here to do what you ask us to do.
I think picking the date is one of the biggest things, just so that we can coordinate it. I know how we get the trash over there is one thing. The other thing is, you know, with the Interfaith council, we did have a lot of other base and involved with that. And it was, so you're saying the Interfaith council's gonna take the, around the walking path? Okay.
And I think it would be very easy for us, Mayor, and, and already to, to put something up there, like that. That circumstance has its own unique situation.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the same thing that we're talking about, honestly.
So maybe there's a few strategic places like that that we could consider putting something like that, that we could monitor, and then it's, we know where groups are going to be actually.
The other.
It's not a free draw.
Yeah.
The other brief input that I might add there was what David shared. And I know we're trying, like, this kind of seems like we're trying to cut it out, but if you've got it in something already to get it to the dumpster, then you might as well just keep taking it. If that makes any sense. It's, it's not like the dumpster is. For, for years, we had one by the Frontier Grill in front of the post office there. And I think Jay Mitchell manned it for a couple of years there and stuff, and ultimately, I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that location at all. The problem of it is, is if it's already loaded up to get it there, we might as well just give it to its final destination.
So it's at least five more minutes.
The other thing, too, is there, there are additional costs associated with, with putting the dumpsters out there.
Yeah, the transfer station too. I mean, when you're trying to have something up in the, up in a dumpster versus just throwing it at a level.
And what are your hours?
During the cleanup, it's, uh.
Eight to four on Saturdays, and seven to five throughout the week.
One other thought, too. So I had somebody bringing up in, in one of our council, um, board council meetings, is the primary with the LDS church is looking for service projects this year. And so I talked to our primary president and said, hey, if we can coordinate that with our cleanup day, that's something that we might throw out there to the LDS church and then other religions as well. But I know they're looking for opportunities already, and so I kind of tried to push her to that date. So it's good that we have the date, but if you can mention that maybe in your wards and, and things like that, we might have more participation on that day. And that would satisfy what they're trying to accomplish, too. What that would mean, though, is from a staff standpoint, seeing that we have other areas beside, you know, we've got the walking path, we've got other areas in the city that we could identify that are shovel-ready projects. That when, if they have a group that they want to come and participate, then we're ready with something that they could easily do, especially for a group that size.
We can definitely work on that. And one thing, if you guys are okay, I'll get Edwin, he's over our P I, he's our PIO, to get some recommendations for those social media posts, so we can, like you said, they're already loaded up. Have somebody to make a social media post, or blasting out there, hey, it's. Hey, it's not that far to get it this much further. We need to work with you guys, get some recommendations on what's.
Well, and like he said, it's cheaper for the city to have them come to us instead of us having to pay drivers to go pick stuff up.
Yeah. And I think it'd just be good, if we have a couple of areas that.
That you're focusing on?
Yeah, we want a dumpster, we do that and then, but it's specific, it's not just a come bring your trash.
So on that Saturday and come pick it up by four o'clock and.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
So is the city sticking with the twenty-sixth through the third? Because Interfaith wanted to start the twenty-sixth, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, well, the dates originally that the county had said start at the nineteenth and we're like, that's Easter weekend. So we bumped to that twenty-sixth. I think we'll just stay with the twenty-sixth.
So is council going to please start advertising?
I think that was a motion. Do we have any, well, we do have a comment.
I just have, I just have a comment. I was here when we got it the other way, the dumpsters. And it was quite the mess, I'll be honest with you. People were dragging anything and everything out, wouldn't even halfway get it in the dumpsters, all over the roads. It was, they don't, maybe strategically and through places that were great, but Walter Town, it just didn't. Well, and I think the plan is just one day too, like the dumpster will be available on that Saturday.
Yeah, like your walking park up there and stuff. I, it's a, it's a, it's a focused project. You know, that makes it completely different than just putting the dumpster out in a random area and then whoever wants.
You have your dumpster divers that will stand there and watch.
And we have, we've done it that way in the past. I mean, we've taken a couple out at the shooting range in Ballard and they were specific for that project, which you would stuff in and haul it off. I mean, that's more what I think we're working.
Yeah, I agree.
So just leave it there the whole week and wait, see, it can be surprised, see what we get.
Mayor, I'll second Councilwoman Goodrich's motion for that week.
Do we have a second? Do we have any other comment? Troy, did you have a comment?
So I'm just curious, I might have missed it, but when is the three?
Is it going to be that same time, the twenty-sixth to the?
That is the tentative date that I talked to landfill director today. He said, it just makes sense that that's when it would be, but he didn't even have a date for their next meeting. He said, but typically, he says, the commission goes with what I tell them. He said, and I'm going to tell them those dates.
Okay.
So that's why I say tentative.
Well, if something changes, let us know.
Absolutely, we will.
So we do have a motion in the second by Councilman Goodrich. Shall we favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll make that our day. We're not doing that open and public meeting tonight. Josh said he could deal with that right now. I'm just kidding. C I B, when your priority list? Oh, yeah, hello, ninety. Let's do that one first, Grant. Thank you. I just wanted to get that. I was like, man.
Okay, this had come before the council previously and you had approved it. There have been some changes since then. This went along with the, I guess, started out as X D L and then is now S N Energy. But going through the gun range, that route changed, which I think was part of the problem here. Because originally the approval was that it would continue down the road south and then was going to join in to where U N Wax needed easement as well. But the biggest change is that U N Wax went out and looked at where the current easement is that has been in place and there's been lines there. Where the easement is and where the pipes actually are, and they're not matching up. And so this is both correcting the former easement where there's already pipes, moving the easement to where the pipes are actually on the ground, and then is also giving them room to run the additional pipe that they, they needed.
So we, this is, this is something that we did approve, but when they went out and saw.
They're shifting where it was.
Yeah. So they, they went to put their line where the easement shows and pipeline that they're supposed to run parallel with something opposite side of the road. So they didn't want to put their line in until we got that. So we told them preemptively to go ahead and move forward. We didn't get any big deal, but we wanted to bring the contract out to board council to let everyone know what's.
So, so the proposed route that they gave just before is the green line and where they're going to be moving it to red? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that proposed was back in, it was actually with Axiom. It was in, it started in two thousand seventeen that they labeled two thousand fifteen.
And the road doesn't look like that anymore either. Well, the road, now it does, but the, when they approved the easement, the road was in a little bit different spot. And so it looks like they improved the road and then put the pipeline on the opposite side of the road. And so that's why that happened. I think staffs looked at it, we've looked at it as the, you know, admin team and.
Yeah, I don't see any, yeah, it's really just catching on the easement to what's actually there. And then still, I mean, putting in the additional pipeline that we had told them they could do a few months ago.
I move we approve them.
Motion, and a second by Councilman Allen. Allen favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll ensure you're unanimous. Second the last one.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we also have our C I B list approval. As you know, a couple of years ago, C I B changed it from requiring a one-year and a two to five-year list to just requiring a one-year. We still have a two to five-year list internally so we can keep track of projects. One thing we did modify from last year is we originally, and I have the past, I have the past two years on there as well. Street reconstruction was our number one. C I B did ask that we be more specific and we have to draw a write-up descriptions for each theme. So we added a very basic description. Essentially, the only change with our one-year list from last year is we're removing the biking path in Nija Park and we are changing street reconstruction to street reconstruction eight hundred south to fifteen hundred east. We've currently been discussing things with Ballard City, Duchene County, and the Special Service District to improve that road to connect Roosevelt City over to Ballard. We are looking at doing a joint C I B application with all of those entities. Right now, tentatively, Ballard is willing to be the applicant. And the goal from this application would be that we submit one based off the entire project to where it would be part grant, part match, but we're looking at the full project, the work that we've already done on that road as part of our match order as well. So if we're able to do this, we're looking at a sixty-eight percent grant. Possibly sixty-eight percent grant, the rest loan. However, oh, not loan, but match based off of what we've already done in the past. Honestly, based off the project, based off the entities involved and the importance of this project, as it will help first responders, it will help people getting to and from the school. We are very confident that we are an exceptionally good applicant. And the request is probably, probably going to be drawn up to be a one hundred percent grant request. Because this truly is a phenomenal project with all the entities involved. The key thing here is we need to have this specifically on our one-year list. Street reconstruction is not enough description. So we're requesting tonight to change that to street reconstruction eight hundred south to fifteen hundred east at two and a half million, where last year was one and a half million. We are not looking to spend that. That is worst case scenario, if we did it ourselves, which we're not. And then our other recommendation, and these are recommendations that council can add, remove, anything on these lists. On our two to five-year list down below, actually, does this have it down below two to five? Okay, so two to five-year list, again, this is purely internal. This does not go to C I B. We have three projects and we want to add two more projects on there, the golf course irrigation at four million. Dustin, is that correct, four million, or golf course irrigation?
That was what they were working on.
Okay, four million is the estimate. I know I'm putting in the footing on that sprout, or errands. And then also I'd like to add a number two back truck at six hundred thousand to the two to five-year list. And again, that's an internal list, but we do want council to be involved with that. So do you have any questions, additions, removals? This list does come from council, is your priorities. These are merely recommendations from staff.
The question I would have, four million, is that front and back, front only, what in that? Just as a threat?
Yeah.
Yeah, three years ago, we got an estimate, it was only three million. The price has gone up. But we, this is one we are looking with our capital projects, worst case scenario, get a sinking fund started. But we do need it on our list. We need to remember that it's on there. The other thing we do want to point out is on the one-year recommendation, we do have cemetery expansion. We know that is a critical one that we are definitely going to need on our one-year list.
Is the back truck replacement or an additional one?
Yeah, it would be actually, Mayor, the trade-in value will be so low at this point. It would benefit the city, I believe, to have it. And with the new truck, because then it could be just for excavation only, which is what wears those trucks out.
Okay.
And Kirby, what was the repairs we did in this year on the back truck?
This year, it wasn't horrible, but it was over thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars in just repairs, so it is one that.
Getting older age.
Did some work.
And so you use the older one for excavation only?
Yeah, excavation only, you know, and maybe some storm drains, you know, things like that, yes. I think it would benefit the city better because you're not going to get a lot of. So when you presented C I B, when would you be doing that and kind of what's the, mostly just to remind me.
So this list would be, this list is due to U Bag at the end of the month. So it's administered to U Bag for approval. They would prioritize things. And then we're looking at the June application grade for the C I B with a joint application, assuming everything falls into place.
And, but you just have the one, or would you go for the others in that list?
So the June is just the one.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. And then, and then we'd have to wait a year, six, okay.
And there are multiple M O Us that would have to be drafted with all the entities, especially with Ballard being the applicant. And so it does look really well for us to be in those applications. Whereas in Aprils, we did one with multiple entities and it received really well. C I B loves when entities work together, so that's one of our focuses. And especially that it involves first responders, children, emergency access. This is an incredible project.
Is this, is it a bridge culvert? What, do you have any idea as far as that goes?
Yeah, box culvert is a little.
One or two.
I think just the one.
Just one.
Yeah, just the one. Match something similar, what goes under Highway forty.
Yeah.
Or an I O to turn off. And this is one where the engineers have estimates of what each entity would be responsible for, but that is not been ironed out. We get expressed, we need to make sure that it is equitable and fair. And again, all the M O Us and everything would come back to council. So putting it on our one-year list is, we are not committing to apply for this. Just should we decide to apply, we have to have all this list.
I will say, Duchene County, Special Service District, the road district, did approve a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure for this already. But like Mr. Baker said, we've got to make sure that everybody is paying a fair share.
Right.
And we're not a hundred percent sure that that's the case right now, but we think that we'll definitely be able to get there. And everybody's, each entity, all three entities are definitely on board with trying to get it done. So I think it's a great project.
I move we approve the adjustments to the one-year C I B list that have been recommended by Mr. Baker.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Adjustment to ordinance for Baker Tibbetts annexation.
What's going on?
C R O special treatment.
Actually, Baker's not on there.
Wiping your hands of it?
Yep.
Okay, so as you see on the screen, it's the ordinance that we had back in twenty twenty-three, I believe. It came to our attention that this never officially went through the state and the county's been kind of trying to communicate with previous staff that is no longer here. So the changes have been made. There was, it was asked, the previous one was asking for a boundary adjustment where it is actually an annexation. And the property owner has changed from Mr. Baker to Mr. Tibbetts. We've been in communication with Mr. Tibbetts and he is good with moving forward with the annexation. So this is just cleaning up that ordinance that's already been approved with the right verbiage and ground.
So is Baker annexation at the top?
Yeah. It's, it'll be modified after today.
Okay.
So do we, when it's just a modification, do we have to come back before public hearing or anything? Or is this something we can just clean out?
All of that's done. The only thing that's changed is the owner and I told Drew to reach out to Mr. Tibbetts, which he's done. He still wants to be annexed. So this is not throwing away all of the work that we already did. This is just confirming the new owner, that yes, they want to finish. All of that still counts. Nothing's changed. And we just give it.
There's no statute of limitations on that then?
Is there anything we have to do then? Is the council just a motion to approve?
Just a motion to approve this. And we're, my recommendation to Josh this afternoon was that we keep the two thousand twenty-three number as well, just to keep it clear that it's the same one. We're just finishing it now.
I'll move we approve.
Any motion to approve? Any other discussion?
I'll second.
Yeah, this is second by Councilman White. Wouldn't you have?
I just noticed my name's not on that one, so if she had my name in there, it would come out. I probably wasn't here when that happened, but.
That, yeah, this one on the screen is the old one, so I will update that. Then I just need a vote from each of you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. We did have the, I don't even see the expenditures go past.
I did. There was just one, I move we approve.
Okay, we have a motion in seconds to approve the expenditures. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. City manager report?
Mayor, he has some financials to review. Should council want him to cover those? If you want Zeke to, he has prepared those.
Let's only put that on if he's wanting to cover those.
He's ready to go.
He's dying to do this.
All right, we need council. So you've got two sets of graphs there and then you've got detail also. So this, this detail is summarized in this graph, so that's what you're looking at there. And if you want to go deeper into it, that's what that, what numbers are. So that first one, the general fund, these are our, where we're at on our budget versus the revenue, broader budget versus the year, progress of the year. So that first one, expenses, we're sixty-one percent through, our expenses are sixty-three percent through the year. So we're on pace well there with expenses. The revenue, it looks a bigger gap than it is. It's showing fifty-six percent of budget and we're sixty-three percent through the year, which is only a seven percent difference. And most of that makeup is timing. We do have minvoices out that regularly come in and taxes and stuff like that. So that will catch up with time. Debt service, we're ninety-one percent in expenses, it's sixty-three percent of the year. And then the revenue there is hundred percent and sixty-three percent of the year. Capital projects, we have spent eighteen percent of the budget. And then the revenue, we brought in forty-four percent. That one, water utility, we're at twenty-three percent of the expenses have been spent and then sixty-one percent of the revenue has been brought in. Sewer utility, this one's doing well. So we have the budget, we've spent twenty-three percent and we are sixty-two percent through the year. And then the revenue, we brought in sixty-five percent. So we're ahead on pace there. Sanitation, same with that one, it's ahead of schedule. We've spent a little bit more than our expenses, but we brought in quite a bit more than our for the year. Ahead of pace there. The next set you have is the claim on cash. So this is where our cash is sitting right now. So the first one is just the general fund and this is about a two-year snap to see the trends of what the cash has been doing. So we've got general fund, debt service, capital projects, water utilities, sewer, sanitation, and then the last page is total accounts altogether. We can see in July of twenty-three, we were about sixteen point nine. We dipped down in September of twenty-four to twelve point three and then now we're back up to seventeen point four altogether. And then that last page, that one's just the detail of where all those graphs come from. Any questions on that? I'll just make a, just a comment really quickly. I think that dip in expenses is when Don came on the council, I'm just saying.
I would agree with Don. I'm not afraid to spend the money.
No, I'm just, oh, that looks good. I'm just, well, that looks good. And these reports are pretty nice, so if there's anything you want to see a different way, or if I need any help, is that?
Well, what it looks like is the city's healthy, and we're, we're pretty well on, on track based on budget and expenses and income.
Yeah.
Just a comment for someone I meet who has no background in the county, I like these graphs, these are, must be helpful to me.
Just curious, what was the debt service, the, the, where we went in the hole, the four ninety-three and the twenty-four? Yeah, I'm not sure.
Maybe check, yeah, look into it.
I'm just curious what that was.
So that was, it looks like it just dipped down for months, so I'm wondering if that was maybe a, like a, something we spent, we got reimbursed for.
Yeah. I'll look into it, though.
Great. Any other comments, questions for Zeke?
How's, how's the new job working out so far?
It's great, it's great, it's nice.
Well, good.
Well, we're excited to have you.
Yeah, exactly.
And appreciate all you do.
All right. Mr. Bake? All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very grateful. Just a couple updates for council, our innovation hub is quasi-technically full, we have an official coming in to sign the last agreement, but things are going phenomenal there, we've had a lot of interest, it's, it's been a really good location and a great asset to our community. The golf course, the range will open this week, so you can come and hit some range balls this week, the weather's been phenomenal, so it's getting that time of year, winter, hopefully, well, I shouldn't have gone when I should have said that. The weather's been great lately, I'll just leave it at that. Um, and furthermore, finally, I just wanted to, to call out, we've had our, our fire department put some stats together today, if you're not aware, our chief has been chief for twenty-five years now, which is an incredible time that he has served. Um, we've, we did a list, Ryan and I, of our firefighters and the time that they spent on, on, on the, um.
Department.
Department, thank you, Mayor. It is phenomenal the quality and time that they put in and the work they've done, so because of the fire staff, I got to call out chief for his great work, and he does make the best taco salad, you see, he's seen a lot there. But our fire department has done a phenomenal job, and we have a ton of experience in service for what they've done, so I just want to give them a shout out, tell them how grateful, grateful we are for them. Are there any questions for me?
Just a, I made a comment, want to thank Sierra again, I mentioned earlier, they're hiring a new entrepreneurship faculty member at USU, should be starting in the fall, she was able to take two on tours, uh, and we should be, probably by the end of this week or next week, have the new candidate up and at least hired, and then hopefully they'll start in the fall, and, and also just, Michael Bailey at USU does technology, is willing to work with anyone there if they need help, like webpage or other things that way, so if, if that comes up, let me know, and I'll be able to connect them with, uh, Michael Bailey, so.
Yes, we do, council. I would just like to say, dude, Sierra, you really picked up and, and, you know, been doing a great job, I'm wondering, who's holding down the fort at the pool?
I'm not sure. We threw a couple lighters at them.
I was just, you know, I, I just appreciate, um, you know, the, the work that you've been doing, and, and specifically for the things that I have heard, heard you over, and it's been great to have, um, over there. Any other question? Thank you. All right, committee reports.
I don't have any, sorry.
Not very good.
None.
Okay. Um, from interfaith council, just the things we talked about for the city cleanup, and then, um, they're, we've seen a preparedness fair on March eighth, um, it'll be at the crossroads, one to four that day, and I left each of you a flyer, so feel free to share that around.
That's March eighth?
Mm-hmm.
And then we do have the spring flame coming up as well, um, that's in April, so we need to make sure, yeah, so we need to make sure we get that information out, because the weather is changing, and so we'll look forward to that activity. Councilman Allen, do you have anything for us?
I don't.
All right, any items, future discussion? Seeing that with entertain motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion, second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.